Calls meeting in order. Need an invocation. Travis, can I get you, give me your name? Am I standing?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon, Lord, to do business for this great community. Lord, we ask that you be with us as we make decisions on behalf of this community and citizens of this town. We pray therefore, the holiday season is coming upon us, Lord, that you will let us remember the true meaning of Christmas and the other holidays that we celebrate, Lord. We ask that you be with our nation, Lord, and we ask for peace across this nation and this community. All these things are not asked in Christ's name.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, we've got the agenda before you. Are there any amendments or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would request that business item one be removed from the agenda tonight until the Park and Rec Committee has a chance to meet and talk about some things.
All right. I've got a motion to remove that item. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
So, just discussion, real quick. So, Gary, as far as this goes, will this impact, because I don't know that we have a meeting set up yet, do we? So, as far as ordering scoreboards, will this, if we pull this from the agenda, we're not sure when our meeting is, the committee meeting is, so will this impact any ordering or anything that you need? Because I think we've got three, two for the community park, right, and one for civetin'. Is that correct? So, that's...
So, what's already been approved?
What have, yeah...
Well, there are two that are already, have been ordered that are on their way that are not part of this. That's already in the process. And then there's two more for community park that would be added, and then one for civetin'. And that's what's before you tonight, those last three.
So, my councilman here says that I would recommend we leave it on the agenda and let me discuss it, and if we delay action on it, that may be what to do, but maybe at least we hear from Parks and Rec as far as what their desires are or needs are.
You okay with that, Perry?
It doesn't matter.
All right. No, we don't have, yeah, and just...
I mean, just so that we know, I mean, so we can discuss, you know, what that impacts.
Councilmore, I guess, was one of your questions, is it going to delay ordering? Is there a timeframe you need to have this ordered by, ordering in by?
And so, what I'm, what I'm...
Is there a deadline as far as...
Right. And what I'm trying to say is...
I guess that's what I'm trying to ask, too.
Well, there is, and so, so instead of pulling it from the agenda, why don't we keep it on the agenda? That way, we can hear from them to address those questions. That's my only thing. We could still delay the action on it.
Perry, can I get you to withdraw your motion?
Talk about it.
All right. Any other changes to the, to the, to the agenda? All right. If there's no, no changes?
Mayor, there was one thing, I think, Mr. Emmer, help me here, but I think we were going to table item number three, which was the Housing Authority's request to accept a street, a dedication of a street, the Penny Drive. That's still the case, isn't it?
We could still move it to January.
Right, but table, it is on the agenda tonight, Mayor, and we're really just not ready to go forward on it. And the request was made, but we'd rather hold that, got a little bit more due diligence to do on that before we're ready to consider if that's all right. We could hold it till January.
So, you're talking about pushing, pushing number three, Smithfield Housing Authority request, till next month?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we remove business item number three, Smithfield Housing Authority, question that the town accept the street and the public housing on 301 South, the Penny Drive. Make a motion that we will remove that from tonight's agenda.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any other changes to the agenda? All right. Any other motions?
We'll get through the agenda as a matter of fact.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. First, aye on the agenda is administering...
Jackson.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just see out in our audience a young scout, Jackson Parker, Troop 77, is with us tonight. Jackson, you want to stand up and tell us what you're doing tonight?
We're welcome. Hope we won't bore you too much.
And you are welcome to come back as many times as you like.
Don't fall asleep.
Well, I just want to say, great job, and keep it up. I know you're, you're pretty close to getting your Eagle, and that's, that's an outstanding award, so keep it up.
First, aye on the agenda is presentations, administering the oath of office to new police officer David Scholes. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
I've got one for you. Get your hand on it. All right. She, repeat after me. "I, David Scholes..."
"I, David Scholes."
"...the undersigned do solemnly swear..."
"The undersigned do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...that I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina..."
"That I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina."
"...and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are..."
"And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are..."
"...or may be established for the government thereof."
"Or may be established for the government thereof."
"...that I will endeavor to support..."
"That I will endeavor to support."
"...maintain and defend the Constitution of said state..."
"Maintain and defend the Constitution of said state."
"...not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States."
"Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States."
"...that I will be alert and vigilant..."
"That I will be alert and vigilant."
"...to enforce the criminal laws of this state..."
"To enforce the criminal laws of this state."
"...that I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias..."
"That I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias."
"...or prejudice."
"Or prejudice."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office..."
"And I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office."
"...as a law enforcement officer..."
"As a law enforcement officer."
"...according to the best of my skill..."
"According to the best of my skill."
"...abilities and judgment..."
"Abilities and judgment."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Smithfield, please. Does anybody here take a picture or anything? Or sit? At this time, we're going to recognize Public Utility Director Ken Griffin for obtaining certificate as public power manager by the American Public Power Association. Paul Sabista, I'd like you to present this plaque. Ken, please. Ken, if you can come, come on up.
Mayor and council, this is an APPA, which is the American Public Power Association. They recognize managers like Ken, who is our utilities director. For those of you who don't know Ken, he joined us about, what's it been now, Ken, eight, seven, eight months now?
Nine and a half months.
Nine and a half months. He came to us from Florida and has done a great job for all our utility, utility departments, electric, water, sewer, and the water plant. And this is for successfully completing all the requirements for the public power manager certificate program. The American Public Power Association presents this certificate to Ken. This is based on course and study, and Ken's done a good job of attending those, staying abreast of all the new information, and keeping us engaged with the rest of the electric community, in this case, and doing a great job. Ken, appreciate your work and your effort. Hope you can hang this proudly on your wall somewhere.
I love it. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask Greg Solider to come to the front to introduce the auditor and give us our audit report.
Mayor, councilman, well, last month, our town manager gave as good of a summary of our current year audit as can be given. In short, he stated that this year's audit is much improved, is indeed a good report. Here with us this evening to back up those comments is Phyllis Pearson of Petway Mills and Pearson. She is a partner and oversaw our particular audit, and she's going to highlight just a few things for you and answer any questions you might have.
We conducted the audit from June through roughly the end of October. We examined the records that support the financial statements, and based on our testing, we issued an opinion that's an unmodified opinion, meaning that we found the financial statements as presented to us to be in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles and to fairly present, in all material respects, the financial position of the town. We've also issued an opinion on required supplementary information, which is the budget to actual statements, the individual fund statements, and the schedule of expenditures of state awards. That is also an unmodified opinion in that we found those supplemental schedules to be fairly stated in relation to the basic statements as a whole. We do not issue an opinion on management's discussion and analysis and the law enforcement officer's special separation allowance, as well as post-employment benefit schedules, because professional standards do not permit us to do sufficient testing to render an opinion, so we do not render an opinion on those documents. We issued an opinion under government auditing standards on the town's compliance with internal control over financial reporting requirements and test of compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulation, contracts, and grant agreements. That is an unmodified opinion with a finding, the finding being that we had some concerns about the, whether or not some other data in the utility billing system is complete because of a loss of data due to a backup problem with the computer system, which is our understanding you're in the process of fixing. We have also issued an opinion on your compliance on the DOT-18 grant. That was a highway construction program that has been performed over a number of years, and those expenditures in this particular year exceeded 500,000, so we had to do a compliance audit on that, and we had no difficulties that you complied with the terms and conditions of that grant. In the basic financial statements, if you have your statement to follow along, starts on page 19. There were $21 million in current assets, capital assets of 54 million, total asset 75 million, total current liabilities 8.6 million, total long-term liabilities 16 million, total liabilities 25 million, and total net position of 50 million. That, these are full accrual statements, and what they're showing you is basically the long-term debt as well as the fixed assets. The statements are presented for the purposes to show the full accrual method of accounting and measurement focus, and they're really not the statements you do, use whenever you make monthly decisions, and we'll get into those statements as we go forward. Page 20 is the statement of activities. The governmental activities spent 12 million dollars, the business-type activities, which is your electric and water sewer fund, 25 million dollars, so the total expenditures of the government were 38 million. You brought in 28 million in charges for services, you had operating grants and contributions of 1.2 million, total general revenues of 9.7 million. You had a change in net position, which is an increase of 719,000, leading to the 50 million in total net position. Page 21 is the governmental funds on the modified accrual basis. This is the statement that you're going to use for decision makings about how you're going to fund future operations of the town. There were total assets of 6.7 million dollars, total liabilities of 990,000, deferred inflows of resources, which is property taxes receivable, of 86,000, total fund balances of 5.6 million, and of that, 4.2 million is unassigned general fund, fund balances, and that is the number that's available for the council to use for carry forward or appropriation as you move forward in time. That more than exceeds the 8 percent recommendation of prior expenditures that the state would like to see you have. On page 22, the total governmental funds, brought in 13 million dollars, total expenditures were 14 million, there was an excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures of 736,000, there were some sales of capital assets of 17,000, leading to a net operating loss of 718, and then that leads to fund balances of 5.6 million dollars. And then if you look at page 25, page 25 is the statement of net position for the proprietary or enterprise funds. The total current assets were 14 million dollars, the total capital assets 15 million, leading to total assets of 30 million, total current liabilities were 3 million, total non-current liabilities 4.9 million, total liability 7.9 million, total net position 22 million. You had 11 million in unrestricted net position, which again is the money that's available for the use of these funds to see that operations are funded properly. Page 26, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in net position, total operating revenues for 25 million, total expenditures 25 million. There's a small operating loss, and then, I'm sorry, operating income, and then there's some non-operating revenue and expense, which is really due to interest on debt, that's a negative 172,000, and so that leads us to a total net income of 221,000, and the net position was 22 million. And since you've had the statements for a period of time, are there any questions about what occurred during the audit or about the statements themselves?
I just had a comment. Our overall fund balance was down from the previous year. Is that correct?
Can, can, general fund?
Yes.
Yeah, is that what you're speaking of?
Well...
Because there's, there's many, there's several fund balances.
Right, well, I'm looking at the third bullet point in your financial highlights, and I'm looking at page 22.
Okay.
It says the governmental funds reported ending fund balances, and I'm rounding off 5.6 million, a decrease of 718,000 compared with the previous year.
That, that is the government-wide numbers in that, that discussion. If you would, page 22, the change in fund balance in your general fund was an increase of 1.9 million dollars. And then the general fund capital projects lost 2.6 million dollars, the special revenue funds 6,759, and that leads to a net change in fund balance for all your governmental funds of negative 718,000. It's that third line from the bottom on page 22.
But, but, our general fund balance went up...
Yes.
...but our capital projects fund balance went down further, and the general fund went up.
That, that's correct.
Was that, Phil, just to simplify it, was that, was that a result of just the payment in the crossings project?
That's correct.
And closing that? So, really, that was just a budget expected debt, and that's where, it just kind of went out, basically, in paying that off, so in real numbers, that was a budgeted debt, it's just starting this year as a debt repayment.
Right.
But in terms of the real cash available fund balance, it, it was increased substantially.
It, it, yes, exactly, it increased substantially. The one thing that, from the prior year, that might be of interest is the revenue bond requirements, compliance requirements, as far as the covenants of concern have been met. Last year, you did not meet those, but this year, that has been corrected. And then if you looked at page 24, the general fund, this is the budget to actual, there are no budget to, no overages where expenditures exceeded budget, that has been properly executed the way the council has instructed.
I have a question about the, instead of talking about the assets, you've given non-current assets, capital assets, land, non-depreciable. What does the capital assets, what are the things that y'all include for that, for capital assets? Buildings and structures?
Buildings, structures, improvements to buildings, certain types of improvements to land that can be depreciated, that's obviously not everything, but some things you do can be depreciated. Computers, if they exceed a certain dollar threshold, furniture, equipment, that, that sort of thing.
Does it break it down from, for department?
It is broken down by department, and there's detailed schedules available that support those, support each one of the numbers. If you looked on page 35, there's, under note seven, there's a list of the, what's capitalized and what the useful life is, and these items are the, from your depreciation And generally, capital expenditures are amounts over $5,000, which is pretty much routine with the best practices in governmental accounting.
We've been in negotiation with the, about our electrical department, I was concerned about that, and what our electrical department actually is considered to be valued at versus the debt that we have on hand, is that something that I can find in this report?
Okay, when you, the report shows you cost numbers, because that's what generally accepted accounting principles require. If you were going to value, you, you would value it at fair market value, and that would take an independent appraiser to do that.
Do y'all take in that, take that in consideration when you do this audit?
No, we're, we, we are not currently permitted to show fair market value information in governmental audit reports. Now, as we move towards international accounting standards, that may very well change, but that's what our professional body decides.
You mentioned something earlier, and I thought I saw it, but I can't find it. How about our net operating revenues? Were they in the red?
Well...
And I understand there's some issues that affect that, but...
Okay. In the general fund, when you say net operating revenues, that's the same thing as net change in fund balance. So, in the general fund, that number was 1.9 million dollars. The capital projects, the 2.6 million dollars, that is a negative, is a loss. Special revenue, 6,759, and then the net change was the 718,000. Your capital projects, just due to their nature and due to the timing of the revenue and expenses, they will show losses because of some of the methods you're using, you're grant-funded, you're loan-funded, so they will show losses in these statements. But it's not necessarily that you're going to have a loss for that project.
Right, but our general fund operating had an increase of 1.9.
Yes, and that's the critical number.
And our reserve balance, a couple of years ago, was below what the state requires.
It was, when we used to, the year we started doing the audit, it was below what the state recommended.
Do you remember what that number roughly was?
Not off the top of my head, but I'd be happy...
Less than 1 percent.
And what is our reserve balance now?
What's the percentage now?
A little better than 40 percent.
What was that? What was the...
Less than 1 percent when Petway Mills started, and this year, the end result was just a tad bit better than 40 percent.
And the, the government commission recommends about 8 percent.
That is the bare bones recommendation, and even if you were to accomplish that alone, you'd still get written up, because our neighboring governmental units typically have on hand much more than that.
Yeah, but we, but just to be clear, we're grouped into a population of 10,000 to 50,000, and our groupings is how Smithfield is grouped, so when you say that, we're on 10,000, and some of our neighbors may be at the 50,000 mark, so, you know, we got to keep that into consideration as we're...
And your ability to generate cash, because you really had to build your cash in the bank accounts up affects that as well.
Right. I mean, I think these are outstanding figures that have been shown.
It is, it is much improved over the prior...
I think there's one major concern I see here, it doesn't have anything to do with audit or our finances, it has to do with the wastewater. I mean, that's just incredible, we've got to address that when we get to our budget savings. Record high cost, 2.7 million, 50 percent increase of prior year's wastewater treatment because of the heavy rainfall. Doesn't have anything to do with your audit, ma'am, or the finances.
But, but it...
That's just incredible.
It is a long-term problem for towns in sandy land.
Yep.
All over the country.
Actually, it's a major problem with infrastructure all over the country and, and the inflow is over with aging in the infrastructure, so we, I agree, Mr. Ashley, we definitely need to continue.
You know, if you invest in infrastructure, it may be very good for the town, it doesn't show up well in financial statements.
Not in the year of investment.
No. It doesn't necessarily reflect how well you invest in your project.
It, it does not, and then over time, additional infrastructure generates additional fees and additional activities for the town, and you see the impact, but it's over time, it's not immediate.
Does not capitalize.
It does not.
What areas do you see that we need to continue to work on, or do you see any areas that are worth noting?
Well, we, we really think you needed to modernize the computer system, because, as much as you can with what's available, because you do have to use a piece of software that's recommended by the local government commission, but that program in and of itself has, is not as technically sophisticated as what you'd find in a commercial market, so we really think that you, you do run some risk if you don't modernize the computer system of losing data. And the data is critical to your operations, because over time, you really need to see five- and 10-year trends to know where you are directing the town financially.
You talking about the software, or are you talking about the hardware?
They work together, so you, you have to have the hardware that, and then the software has to be something that the hardware can handle, but the hardware has to be functioning properly every day for the software to work effectively.
You know, we, we tried to implement a new software program, and it didn't work.
You're speaking, I believe, of ICS CSI with regards to our utility and overall general ledger data, but more specifically, what Phyllis is addressing here is an instance where, due to an email that was opened, a virus got into our system and literally wiped out months of data, detailed data. We still have the overall numbers in our general ledger to be able to account for numbers this year, but it was because we didn't have the hardware, the software, to properly back up that data that it got wiped out. Even when data's wiped out, you should be able to restore it, because you backed up data. Our system failed to back it up, we could not restore what was lost.
If I could, this is just from our own practice, our data is backed up in our office every day in Texas, Oregon, and Washington, because we don't want to lose anything. We always want to have a complete database, and there is some expense involved with maintaining a system with that level of security built into it, so you might want to just consider what you can afford, what you can approve on.
Will it noted?
We're gonna be working on that shortly.
Any other questions?
If I could make one more comment, we'd just really like to thank Greg and Paul and the staff, the accounting staff and the utility accounting billing staff for all their assistance, and they were very helpful and put in a lot of extra hours to see that this got in on time. And it did go through the local government commission with one review and no comments, which we were very happy about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In closing, let me just say that the, just remind you that the management discussion analysis, that's, and analysis is done in-house, and so I can answer questions about that if you have any mind. Also, just wanna hats off, not to just the finance department, not to just the town manager, but our ability to improve our numbers over time has been a cumulative effort of every department within the town. And everyone's worked hard to make sure that our numbers are improved each year.
Thank you, Greg. At this time, we're gonna go into, I'm gonna identify a public hearing. We're about to enter into ZA-14-04, Town of Smithfield. Town of Smithfield Planning Department is requesting a zoning text amendment to the Town of Smithfield's Unified Development Ordinance, Article 19-4. On-premise signs which will allow for property located within commercial zoning districts with more than one street front, one additional ground sign. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into an open public hearing at this time.
So moved, Ms. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'm gonna ask Paul Embry to present the information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. If you will recall back at your October meeting, planning board asked you to, I mean, the planning staff asked you to consider scheduling public hearing, to consider this ordinance amendment. It was referred to the planning board in November. They looked it over and, and have forwarded it to you having been approved by the planning board on November the 6th. Basically, what this does, I'll summarize it rather than to go all the way through because we, we went into much detail in it in October. But basically, we had a glitch in our ordinance that only allowed two signs on a lot if it were a corner lot. This ordinance amends it to the point that it, any dual-frontage lot would allow a secondary sign. After some discussion that was in there, the primary sign would be allowed to be 75 square feet in a B, in a business or O and I district. And in industrial district, they would be, the primary sign could go up to 125 square feet, primarily due to the size of the lots. Industrial lots are traditionally much larger than commercial. And then the secondary sign on both of these would be a 40-foot sign, 40-square-foot sign. So with that being said, this is, in essence, the same that you saw in October with the inclusion of the, the 40 square feet of sign area for the secondary sign. So with your consideration, we'd like you to take this under consideration and, and render a decision in regard to amending the ordinance. And I stand open for any questions.
Any questions for Paul from the council? Now, I'm gonna ask for public comments. Is there anybody in the, in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? At this point, the council can adopt this if they want to.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, at this point, we can, we can, we can adopt this ordinance if you so choose.
I make a motion to approve this request as proposed.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, I've got a consent agenda in front of you. Oh, citizens' comment, I'm so sorry. This is a citizens' comment part of a meeting. Are there any citizens who'd like to bring something in from the council at this time? You can come up and say something you'd like. You'll state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tony Nixon, Eight Seater Drive, Smithfield, North Carolina. And tonight, I thank the mayor and town council. I'm here representing the East Smithfield Improvement Organization, and I'd like to, I basically introduce or read a statement to be read into the record, which I will supply you with a copy of. The East Smithfield Improvement Organization would like to applaud the chief of police, Chief Michael Scott, on addressing our department's position on recruitment during the working session of the town council on November 18, 2014. We would like to express again our position as an organization in a meeting with town officials on October 2, 2014, that we would like to see more representation of all the citizens of Smithfield in our police department and town government. With that being said, we ask that more aggressive actions be taken on behalf of the Smithfield Police Department and recruitment of minorities within our police department and all departments within town government. We formally ask Mayor Lampy to immediately form a task force that will address issues of diversity and the inclusion within our town to include members of the town council, human resources, students from the local high school, which would be Triple S, businesses, and community leaders that will drill down to the core issues that affect our stakeholders and how to implement those conclusions. We would like to see more diverse civil servants throughout Smithfield that are inclusive. An organization's journey to become inclusive begins with a critical but simple inquiry. What actions is my organization taking to foster an inclusive work culture where uniqueness of beliefs, backgrounds, talents, capabilities, and ways of living are welcome? We, as a community, have made great strides, and we have much work to be done. Together, we can achieve our goal of a more diverse and inclusive government representative of all its citizens. These issues, we feel, will aid in the attraction and the establishment of new businesses and subsequent employment of our citizens in and around Smithfield. And this is humbly submitted by Tony Nixon, Chairman of the East Smithfield Improvement Organization, Lucy Washington, co-chair of the East Smithfield Improvement Organization, and Alice King, recording secretary. Thank you.
Well, since you've, since you've asked me to do something, which sounds like a whole lot of work, and if anybody else had asked me but you, I probably would roll my eyes, but I'll have...
You always say that.
I'll have Paul, I'll have Paul call you, and we'll, we'll meet next week.
Okay.
We'll get, we'll get started.
I really would like us to seriously consider those students from Triple S, younger people in any of the decisions that we make as a town, as a group, in that specific arena, because I feel like the young folks really bring a lot to the table. Those are the folks who we're making these decisions will affect the most in upcoming years. So certainly, by all means, haven't called me.
You're a brave man. All right. You're on. I'm gonna take a poll.
I'm a brave man because that, we're here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come up and say anything? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna close the public comment section. And we have a consent agenda in front of us. I need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Now, on the business items, we have got, number one, consideration to reallocate $5,000 to purchase three scoreboards for Smithfield Community Park and the Civitan Field. Gary Johnson, come on up and tell us about these, these boards.
Mayor and council, as you know, you funded two scoreboards in this year's budget, and those two scoreboards have been ordered, they have been received, and they are at the park ready to be installed. We would like to install two additional scoreboards at the Smithfield Community Park and one at Civitan Field. There's money in the capital line item for shade structures at the community park. We want to reallocate some of those funds to replace the scoreboards at the park and at Civitan Field. We've received a grant from the county from the open fund space for 7,800, and need approximately $5,000 to install those three additional scoreboards. So our, our request is to reallocate $5,000 from the shade structures and the capital line item for scoreboards rather than shade structures.
But the total cost of the scoreboards is 5,000 plus 7,500?
Yeah, the total cost is gonna be about 12,750. They're 4,250 apiece.
So Gary, does the grant money received from Johnston County, the 7,800, does it have to be utilized for scoreboards?
That is what we put in the grant application, and we can probably have that modified if we needed to, but that is what we put in the grant application.
And the cost of an individual scoreboard is about 4,200?
4,250.
Gary, we have formed a subcommittee of council members who are gonna go over your, your future allocation of needs as one big group lump sum. And, and one of the questions earlier was, if we delay this tonight and pick it up next month, is that gonna interfere with your, your schedule?
I don't think it's, the, the two that we ordered, it took about 16 weeks to get them in. They say it takes eight weeks league time. It actually took about 16 weeks to get those in. We were awarded a state tournament coming up next July, so we would like to get them in and installed. Prior to that state tournament, we have 40 teams coming from everywhere, and we'd like to have those up at the community park.
So you need them by July?
Well, it'd be nice to have them for our little league season, but by July, definitely.
If you're reallocationing funds, I'm seeing an issue. If you're not gonna use the funds for the, for the shade structure, there shouldn't be any reason why this can't last.
Well, the, the problem I have with it is Civitan Park. We clearly, at our last meeting, wanted a subcommittee to look into parking rec, as whether we even gonna operate some of these outlined parks in the future. I'm not sure it'd be prudent to put a new scoreboard in, a facility we may not even operate. I have no problem with the rest of it.
What is the...
And that's a valid point. So, so that was actually one of, gonna be one of my questions. So you're asking for three additional scoreboards, one of those being at Civitan, right?
That is correct.
The other two would be placed at the community park.
At Smithfield Community Park.
So I guess my question is, if the council feels, sees fit, is that we would approve the two for the community park and possibly delay the one for Civitan until such time we had an opportunity to discuss the needs further.
Gary, you mentioned to take the money from the shade structures. Are those not needed?
The shade structures are needed, but they are not, in our opinion, we need the scoreboards worse than we need the shade structures.
So remind me again, what, what were these shade structures for?
The shade structures go over the bleachers, around the fields at the community park.
Okay, gotcha.
Their canvas shade is for sun protection and protection from foul balls and that kind of thing.
But with the extension on the fence that you've recently done in the last, I don't know, like two or three years, if I'm not mistaken, maybe, maybe the last year and a half, the safety piece has gotten much better.
It has gotten much better. It has gotten much better.
Right, I think the shade structure will be needed in the future. I do agree with you. I think the scoreboards will be important in this time.
How long do these scoreboards last?
The ones that the community park now, that have been up there since they were built in 2000, 2001, so they're about 15 or 16. The new ones should last longer because they're LED, whereas the other ones were the, the old regular, I guess, air conditioning light bulbs. So you get sockets that rust out and that kind of thing. So the newer ones should last longer.
This involves no new money in the budget?
No.
This is reallocation. You can get by with the two for community park for now?
Yes.
I move that we approve the two, two scoreboards for community park.
To allocate the funds.
Reallocate the funds.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I got a motion as second to approve two boards for the community park. By my understanding, we're just deferring the, the third one to see if we do some more study on it. So is there, is there any, any comments or, or any discussion on, on the motion right now for two scoreboards? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion cast. Okay. Item number two, authorization to advertise a public hearing to be held January 2015 for the closing, in the right of two hours. Paul's gonna tell us about it first.
This request comes from the property owners of that block. It is multiple property owners, and as in your action form, it states that the property owners wish to vacate the alleys in, in order to consolidate the property. The alleys are not being function, they're not functioning as alleys. One of them has a building built across it. And the, the question that came up from council at last month when this was brought up was, were there any existing utilities, public utilities located in these alleyways? The public utilities director, Ken Griffin, has looked into that. He has made a determination, there are no public utilities. There are water service lines to the buildings that exist, but those are not public utilities. So the council is, with that question being answered, again, staff would ask that the council considering, considering this for a, a public hearing at the next month council meeting for the closure of the alleyways.
So, so just, thank you, Paul, and I'm, and I'm satisfied. And the reason that I ask, my main concern, for those of you who don't, don't know, we had a situation a few years ago, though it wasn't exactly the same, didn't have anything to do with the, the alleys or anything, but we had a situation out at the outlet center where there was a leaking, I believe it was either water or sewer.
Water.
Water line that was tailed, and it ran directly underneath a building at Carolina, the Premium Outlet Center. So that's why I wanted to make sure that there were none of our utilities present before we gave away these easements and so forth. But if we don't have any easements, I mean, any utilities presence, then I'm satisfied.
I received a phone call yesterday afternoon from the Scots, who are one of the landowners out there, Jackie and Kathy. I actually talked to both of them. And they had planned to be here tonight, but, well, if you're aware or not, but Curtis Hines, longtime owner of Hines Heating and Air Conditioning, passed away yesterday morning. And there were churchgoers with him, and they were at his visitation tonight. So they wanted me to, or let Paul know that they had planned to be here, but they were, felt compelled to go to that visitation.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions for Paul?
So I guess there are four.
Oh, I...
They were robbing, obviously.
Yeah, I talked to them at length, but...
Well, I'm, I'm looking for, if there's no more discussion, I'm looking for an authorization to advertise this.
Move we approve the request.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Number three, item number three's been removed. So we're on to number four. Paul, you're back up.
Okay, thi, this is just an update to appraise you of where we are in the West Smithfield Beautification Project. As you, we met on Tuesday, December the 25th, Lenny Branch and myself, with six of the property owners. And based on road frontage, these are the primary property owners out there because the, not only the length of property lines that they have, but the number of driveway accesses that they had. It was a very fruitful discussion. The meeting lasted approximately two hours. We had a number of very good inputs into the meeting of how to handle their driveway cuts into the property. Lenny, I would say we had no adverse comments at all. We had some recommendations of widening some of the driveway cuts to, before we presented it to the council and to DOT. And Lenny and I, from a staff point of view, agree with those. Relocation, realignment of a few of the driveway cuts were requested in order to unify properties with the actual... with the actual owners. We had proposed some common driveway cuts on property lines and due to some relationships between adjacent property owners, it was brought forth that that probably would not be a good idea. So we will adjust those comments that we've received. Once we have our second meeting, we're trying to now schedule the second meeting with the remainder of the property owners out there and we'll adjust that and come back to you in January with the revised drawings for that. So that's where we are right now. As I said, the meeting, I was pleasantly surprised and pleased with how it went. There, everyone was in favor of the landscape improvements and saw that it would benefit their properties.
Any questions for Paul?
Mr. Emmer, the plan that you're working on, does it incorporate sidewalks?
We are showing sidewalks on both sides of the road. The reason for doing that at this point in time is when you do a master plan and you're looking out into the future, it is advisable to, if that is a feasible possibility in the future. And DOT has a fund that we know about, the sidewalk that was put out three oh one north along that road all the way to Buffalo Road or Boca Derry Road, excuse me, that came out of their sidewalk fund. And so that is a separate fund, it's not part of the landscape fund, but if we plan for it now, we'll have it there in the future. And hopefully we'll be, can receive some DOT funding for that also.
From a practical perspective, some of those businesses that have the car lots, they are stacking their vehicles very close to the roadway, pretty much in their driveways at the complete width of their business front. Obviously, that's going to change. What is your vision or the committee's vision of how those cars, how that will be worked out?
There will be single points of access, in some cases dual points of access to the properties. There will not be one complete frontage where they can just drive off the road into there. It's a safety problem when you have that and DOT much prefers, as a matter of fact, if it was, if those lots were to go away and something new was going to be built on those lots tomorrow, DOT would only allow driveway cuts in specific locations. So what we're trying to do is bring it into compliance with DOT standards as part of this project.
Which also means that the setback, the beautification project will go and the cars will be set back at a proper distance.
That's correct. Most of the car lots on the right-hand side, as you go out of town, the front row of the cars that are being displayed are actually in DOT's right-of-way. The cars are displayed there.
I think it's much needed. What's your timeline? I see here it says final plan and then it says submit to DOT. What is your vision of when this project can begin to break ground and be completed?
At the time, if you'll notice up in my second paragraph up there, after the town council passes the resolution requesting DOT's assistance, it notes that at that time, the plan, then DOT, will be taking the lead in the project as far as design, survey, design, and actually some of the construction. DOT has indicated that our primary responsibility in the project will be the design, which we're conceptualizing now, and then later for maintenance, operation and maintenance of the facility. They, since it's a U.S.-numbered highway, they will probably do a lot of the construction themselves. That's to be determined, in all honesty.
You've given us a good plat at the port meeting the other day that covered all this and you've got that in your office if we need a copy of it.
Yes.
Any other questions for Paul?
I just wanted to add the fact that you spoke about sidewalk also for Wilson Mills Road. Did you have a chance to follow up on that?
No, sir, I have not.
I mean, it's not pressed as much as this, but I would like to consider looking into that while you're on the plan now. You might as well look into that as well. I appreciate some of that.
It's a very good comment. We do have a lot of foot traffic coming down Wilson Mills Road and coming out to Seventy and coming on into town, so.
I just, I'd like to just thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Paul? All right, Paul, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This time, we have council members' comments. Any council member like to say anything?
I'd just like to thank the police department for their actions today along with the sheriff's department with the situation that we had with the schools this afternoon. I've got three children that are at the New Charter School and I spoke with them this afternoon and said it was pretty scary for them to go through something like that. Obviously, anytime you hear the word lockdown, you know, my wife was immediately calling, emailing, and as well as others. So I just wanted to thank the chief and your department as well as the sheriff's department for a very quick response out there and it sounds like there was a job, job well done and really put the children at ease, just seeing the police presence out there. You never know this day and time when something can be real and, again, hats off to your department.
I've got a couple of things I wanted to say. I've had a chance to go out to the outlet center this weekend during the Black Friday event, all the heavy traffic out there, and I'm happy to report that it appeared to me that it's working. And my concerns about the roundabout previous meeting were concerns, but it appeared like that people still struggled a little bit to figure out what's going on, but it appears to be working. I also noticed our police department, I believe I saw several policemen out there, also saw some extra signage that was put out there and the good news, it had appeared to me, although I wasn't out there all the time, appeared to me to be working pretty well. Another thing that I want to report is that if some of you have noticed, over in the Little New Theatre area, the Methodist Church has gone and finished paving the lot there where Smithfield Auto Parts used to be and there is a design going in with brick columns and fencing there that will match the fencing in the downtown area. I don't know the timeframe on that, but it's a work in progress. I'll also advise you that directly in front of the Little New Theatre on the sidewalk, there's some safety issue there with the sidewalk. If you were to fall off the sidewalk, you might roll down the hill and they put up a temporary barrier there. It's not very attractive, but at the last appearance commission meeting this month, or last month, the commission, the appearance commission is funding a matching rail and fencing that will go right in front of the Little New Theatre there that will also blend and match in with the fencing in town. And I also noticed that fence had been fixed over there by the little brown jug that had been run into by a car somehow. The only other thing I want to say is, I noticed out in East Smithfield, guys, that there in the Hevner property that we had done a beautification project and put up some posts and in some blocked off wire, that wire's down. And I don't know if that's an ongoing problem, but it looked like on both the large entrances that wire was down. I don't know if it's been cut, I don't know if it's been, or what, but Chief Scott's looking at me like he's aware of that, but...
I am aware of it and we are looking into why it's down. It's not cut. It looks like the other one is down.
I'll speak to the owner. And I'll find out, but I'll find out about that because I did notice that it was down. I'll find out what's going on with that.
So, Gary, just one comment. You mentioned that area and I've asked this question several times, so hopefully, maybe something can happen. There is a sign there if you're heading out in the, down Seventy there, right in that area. It's about a four-by-four sign. I guess town, or someone put it up when we did this project. It's on the right-hand side if you're going out. I've asked that, I think it's probably served its purpose, I would ask if possibly we could have that sign removed.
Yeah, I wish I would.
Yeah, it's a USDA sign.
Lenny, you know what the sign he's talking about? Can get it tomorrow morning?
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other comments from the council?
I have a few. Since this is the last meeting before Christmas and New Year's, I did want to take the opportunity to thank all the department heads and our staff. Last few years have been touchy with budget issues and I think everybody has done a great, great job that we heard from Greg and the auditor. They're great numbers and I appreciate all that you do and all the employees do and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Also want to encourage everybody, there are a number of activities coming up in Smithfield and we talk about small-town living and what makes small-town living great. Part of that is the number of activities we can participate in. We've got a Christmas parade, we've got a number of other activities downtown, I think. Do we have tree lighting this year?
Thursday night.
So please, let's, as a council, just try to make as many of these as we can and encourage all the citizens to attend these activities because they're the things that can make Smithfield great. And that was it. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one thing I'd like to say. I'd also like to echo what Mr. Ashley said about thanking our staff and our department heads and the council. It's been a year for us. This is our twelfth meeting. For me, as a new councilman, I've enjoyed working and I look forward to continuing my service on the board. One thing I would like to ask in our work session, we had a discussion about properties that's not meeting compliance, and Mr. Ashley made a statement in that meeting referencing some of the town's properties. I would just like to ask that as we move forward, we look at that and make sure that we're following the rules. I'd like to ask the mayor, if you could get us a list of our properties and if there are code violations, what do we need to do to get those in order?
I've already spoken to Paul about it.
Okay.
That is a good point from Emery's side. All right, anything else? Okay, this time, we'll move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, just following up on those dates, the Christmas tree lighting is this Thursday at seven P.M. The Grinch Run, the annual race we do, is this Saturday at community park and that starts at ten A.M. and you can register there before the event, right before, and if you want to do that, get there early. Also, the Christmas parade is a week from this Thursday on December eleventh and that starts, obviously, downtown on Main Street at six-thirty. And just as a reminder, we have planned our next upcoming work session on December sixteenth, that's a Tuesday, at six-thirty here at Town Hall. We're going to format that as more of a budget kind of goal-setting session. There's been some discussion on that, so we'll try to have a good start, get some direction to staff at that work session in two weeks. Mayor, just an update on the Smithfield Crossings Project. There is a mediation set for next week in Raleigh that will take place on December ninth, so hopefully we can get things wrapped up on that case with the contractor and get that resolved in the very, very near future. Which, if we can do that, we can also then kind of get to the last part of the project, which is near and dear to the hearts of many in East Smithfield, about the fencing and some of that buffer in that area. So I think Mr. Emmer informed Mr. Nixon and others about the timing of that. Got to kind of finish that first step before we can get to the next step, which is that fencing, but it is on our mind and we're trying to get through to that part before we can do that. So there is kind of a little method to the madness on getting that fence installed, so we'll get there as soon as we can. Also, Mayor, on the water plant operations, as you know, we're a little bit short-staffed right now, so we are going to use the EnviroLink firm to help us with our staffing for the next few weeks, if not the next couple of months. And also, I've got some materials for you, which I'd like for you to review that Shannon can pass out before we go home. We just got them this afternoon. I've looked through it a little bit and it involves in some longer-term contractual potentials there. The numbers are not final by a long shot, but it gives you a rough basis of similar costs there if we use a contractual firm to help us out at the plant. So that's something to look into and something we can continue to look into, I think, for the next few weeks or the next couple of months as an option for us in operating that plant. Also, the Visitors Bureau has been conducting a wayfinding study. They completed their part one last spring. They've not entirely completed, but have done the groundwork on the part two or phase two of the wayfinding study with their consultants. They finished that last week, so there will be another report coming on that. Basically, this phase two will, it'll give us a little bit more detailed design of the actual signs and there's different categories of signs. Some are what they call gateway signs on the edges of town, some are what they call trailblazer signs and there's another category of signs that's kind of in between those. And these are the more decorative signs, not just a specific, here's a business kind of sign, but more of a, here's the direction to the shrap, to the outlet center or to the community park or to downtown Smithfield. And they give you general directions and they tie in, they're easy to follow. And the part of the idea will be to get those up in a matching manner that's attractive to visitors, easy to follow, but also the other part of the effort will be to clean up some of our existing signs so that we can lose some of our sign clutter. And that's in several places in town. And I'd say one place that really looks bad right now, a lot of that's DOT and we are going to meet with DOT, I've got some great pictures, which is the signs we're getting off of Ninety-five, primarily headed south on Ninety-five, like going to exit Ninety-five, going to the outlet center. There's so many signs on that exit ramp that you really, they're accurate, but you just can't read them all. It's almost more confusing than it is helpful. I know if you're like me, a lot of you don't use that exit just because of where you live, but if you ever get a chance, go out there and just take a loop and look at all those signs there. It's really hard to take in. When you see it presented in pictures, you can really see how distracting it is. And I think actually the answer there is less is going to be more for us. So if we can remove a lot of those signs, we have DOT's blessing, leave up the effective ones and the newer ones, I think we'll have a much better presentation for the town. So that's something we're working on right now, just want to give you an update there. Of course, the ultimate cost and expenditures for this wayfinding project, it will be substantial, but we're working on the funding with that with the Visitors Bureau. They do have, it's a long story, but they do have funds that are expended just for Smithfield as a promotional, not beautification, but really an advertising marketing element for the town. And if it comes out right, that's about somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars, depending on the year and the returns on sales tax or hotel motel taxes. We might be able to implement that sign program over a two- or three-year period using those funds, if not be our funds properly, but the funds that flow through the Visitors Bureau to be used in Smithfield. So it might be a good funding avenue we could use to fund those signs and have a really positive impact on just the way the town's presented and advertised. So that could be actually an expensive, I think, beneficial project could actually be funded without too much pain with, you know, toward our general fund. And finally, Mayor, I also want to thank our staff on the budget work. I know Greg didn't say much about his staff, but they did most of the work on that and I want to give them full credit. Greg did a great job this year. And it's funny, he's been here a year, he's already turned things around completely all by himself by just this year presence. The numbers are truly, when you have a chance to look through it in more detail, the numbers are good, they really are. I mean, the council should be proud. You guys have taken the lead in enforcing those changes and I think you've done a great job on that. But again, the results speak for themselves. I mean, those numbers, you can compare those numbers to anybody, any town in Johnston County or any of our adjacent counties and I don't think anyone can compare, period, the end. You look at our fund balance, you look at our budget, our expenses, and it cannot compare anywhere you look, I would compare it to anybody. So that's something we couldn't have said two years ago or three years ago, but we can say now. So again, that's to your credit, but also the staff's credit and I think it's on a good account.
Thank you, Greg, for doing that.
Thank you, Mayor, for that.
All right. At this time, anybody else have any comments? I'm adjourned the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'm ready to go. I was trying to get out of here.